Good evening, welcome to the zoning board meeting, February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. First of all, I'd like to welcome Stephanie Accarley, our new administrator for the ZBA. We look forward to her participation as our administrator. So far, she's done a fabulous job putting together tonight's agenda for us. So, welcome Stephanie, everybody from the ZBA. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty, relating to the two thousand and twenty noral coronavirus outbreak emergency, February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, seven o'clock, public meeting of the Norfolk zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software. The software will allow you to view the meeting and submit a question to the chair via the rate for here function. The meeting will be broadcast by Norfolk Community Television. Please note, please sign in with your first and last name, or I'm unable to change your name. Use the chat feature at the bottom of the screen to identify yourself. If you wish to ask a question or provide comment, please use the raise your hand feature. Tonight, we have a full agenda. We start with seventy-four Leland Road. It's a special permit for a deck. We have thirty-five Pine Street, which comprehensive permit, which my understanding is going to be continued. We then have a continued public hearing for five Lakeshore Drive, which is three special permits and one variance. We have a public hearing for eight West Birch Road, which is three variances for a deck and a screen port. We have a discussion with regard to F five A, which is accessory buildings. And we have some minutes to approve, and we have just an annual report to look over. So at this time, I would ask Joe Sebastian, would you please read it to the record? The public seventy-four.
Yes, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Notice hereby given in accordance with chapter forty-eight Massachusetts general laws and all amendments there too, in accordance with the governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty, relating to the two thousand and twenty novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, that public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals on February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The meeting shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access to this meeting shall be made utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. The meeting will be recorded for future broadcasts by Norfolk Community Television. The link for the Zoom meeting will be posted on mygovernment.org no less than forty-eight hours before the meeting. Edward and Rosemary Lyons, seven P M. For a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-eight, section nine, as amended, and section F four B, Norfolk zoning bylaws, to allow the demolition and reconstruction of an existing non-conforming deck in the same footprint, which does not violate twenty-five foot setback of section E one D. But does, which does, excuse me, violates twenty-five foot setback of section E one B, but does not violate those requirements to a greater extent than the original structure. The property is located seventy-five Leland Road, assesses map four, block ten, lot three, and that's R two zoning district.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Rosemary and Jeff. Rosemary, I know you're on a phone, so we'll bear with you. We'll let you start off, and then you can have Jeff help you where you need help. The one thing I did notice on your application was you don't identify a size of the deck, I don't think, that's existing already. So, if you give us that information, that would also be helpful, whether you or Jeff can provide that.
I believe it's a twelve, twelve by ten?
The existing deck is twelve feet by eleven feet, and the new deck's going to be the same, twelve feet by eleven feet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Hey, go ahead, Rosemary.
Um, I grew, I have nothing to say. I'm going to let Jeff take care of it. He's done all the work on this. But they just told me I should show up for the meeting, that's all.
I can do a little background, then then turn it over to Jeff, if you don't, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, so. So, had correspondence between Mr. and Mrs. Lyons and then Jeff from Janko Construction about the deck that they they want to tear down and reconstruct, they're having some other work done on the house as well with Janko Construction. And back and forth of the conversations was that, unfortunately, in this situation, the deck is, you know, non-conforming as it relates to the setback, so they need to have come before the zoning board appeals for a special permit. Through through Jeff's office, they reached out to Level Design, prepared the plan that's before you tonight to present to the board in order to seek the special permit. We demoed the deck and reconstructed it the same exact size where it's located. And the property, I know it's a little bit unique, so it's a split between Norfolk and Franklin, so we did have to, it's quite a bit of work, but between Jeff and Rosemary and her husband, it's been a long journey to get to here, so. To say the least, but a little bit complicated because it's traveled to two communities, but nevertheless, I'm here tonight, and any other questions, you can direct it to Rosemary or Jeff.
Jeff, do you want to add anything?
No, I think they hit most of it. It is the same sized deck that we're taking down, putting back up. It is already non-conforming. We did have the plot planned, put together by Level Design, which, as Rich mentioned, was not an easy task with the town line coming right through there. But taking down the existing deck, putting up the same sized deck, we're also doing some siding at the house as well when we do the deck.
Okay, so is it Jeff?
Yes.
So I, it's Don Hanson, I have a question. Is the deck going to be significantly higher than the current deck?
Exact, everything's going to be exactly the same, just new.
So, so basically, if if you were to repair twenty percent of this deck every year for the next five years, and rebuild it in effect as you repaired it, you wouldn't even have to come before this board for a special permit, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So what I'm hearing is this deck is going to be identical. I don't mean in terms of the wood is still new, but basically in terms of its size and its height as the existing non-conforming deck.
Exactly the same.
Okay, if if that's the case, Mr. Chairman, other than whatever questions we have, I believe we can expedite this because that well falls within the purview of the zoning board for special permits that we have been issuing for the last seven and a half years I've been on the board.
That is correct, Don. Does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant?
No questions.
No questions. Everything looks like it's in good order.
Good.
Maybe we can deliberate this one tonight, Chris.
We will do our best, Don.
Okay.
We will do our best. At this time, then I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing for seventy-four Leland Road, Norfolk.
Do you want to see if anyone wanted to say anything first?
Any butters?
I don't think so, but is there anybody here for seventy-four Leland Road? Who wants to speak?
I'm not seeing any hands raised.
No.
All right.
Okay, I so moved Chris's, I so moved Chris's motion or stated motion.
Second.
All those in favor, I'll do roll call vote. Mike Kaliza?
Aye.
Joe Sebastiano?
Aye.
Don Hanson?
Aye.
Tim Martin?
Aye.
Christopher Weider, aye. Okay, very good. As Don had mentioned, we will try to deliberate this tonight, Rosemary. And you can check in with Stephanie in the next couple of days and see what's happened, okay?
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Rosemary.
All right, thanks. Talk to you later, Jeff. Bye.
Okay. All right, it's seven nineteen, so we're doing fine at this time. Thirty-five Pine Street, the comprehensive permit in our package, we have a letter from Michael O'Shaughnessy, the counsel for this project. He's asked for continuance until our March meeting of March seventeenth. So could I have a motion to continue the public hearing for the residents of Pine Street till March seventeenth at seven P M?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm sure, so we did, I did discuss to him on the phone, the possibility to canvass the board to see about doing a special meeting on March third. He must have forgot about that in the letter. We've had, so the discussion with Beta, Beta's doing the peer review right now for the plans. And the thought being that their review will commence and that they could then provide that to the applicant, so I don't know if he, if if the board would entertain a special meeting on the third of March. I don't know why, I must have forgotten the letter, because I talked about it this afternoon.
Is is everyone on the board available on March third for a special meeting to discuss this?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Don?
Yeah, I guess so. I guess I'm questioning why if the applicant requested that it be continued, why it wouldn't be automatically continued to our meeting on Wednesday, I believe it's March seventeenth?
Yeah, so we, I don't know, yeah, I wish she was here, but we, I did talk to him several times about the possibility of doing the meeting on March third to be able to get the peer review back in and get the this, the discussion going on this instead of waiting another to the seventeenth of March. And if the board would be, you know, so obliged to do that, then do it on March third and then go from there.
So should the motion, should the motion be just to move it to March third and just set the date and time? Right. Excuse me, is this? Is the lack of the peer review response, is that the, is that the town's peer review, or is it the applicant's peer review?
So the 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 town's engineer got the peer review back a little bit later than originally anticipated because the applicant's engineer was addressing fire department comments, because they met with the fire chief and those revisions, and then sent it to Beta Engineering to review. So that was the slight shift in the scheduling of it. And so Beta is actively doing the review right now, but they weren't, they're not prepared, you know, obviously, to talk about it this evening. But the discussions of Bill, he felt that he can complete his review and get it out to the applicant's engineering team to be able to respond to it at the, and actually, if the board were to hold it on March third, to have that discussion on March third.
And what is your recommendation, Rich, as our town planner?
So my, so my recommendation actually was to see if the board would hold a meeting on March third. But I guess I got lost in translation here.
Okay.
Yeah, so. All right, if it doesn't, then what I suggested was you have the meeting if everybody's available. If it doesn't line up, then they can go to the seventeenth of March, but it would be, you know, nice to 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 move that along because you you're back more or less to your regular schedule once a month, so.
All right, so I'll amend the motion to continue the public hearing for the residents at Pine Street till March third at seven o'clock. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Discussion, Mr. Chairman, I would like to then also amend that motion to say that this would be the only item that would be on our March third agenda.
I don't think I could entertain you on that motion, because I don't know if that's possible yet. There may be something that comes up tonight that would require us to meet on March third for something else. So I guess I will, let's first address Mr. Hanson's motion. I have a motion that this item can be the only item on the agenda for March third. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have discussion. All those in favor of this? Mike Kaliza?
No.
Joe Sebastiano?
I don't know what to say then.
What, not a yes or a no?
I I don't know what to say. He just said no, so what should I say?
Joe, you say what's in your heart, okay?
I I'd like to have, I'd like to have one item on the agenda for me for March third, if that's okay.
Tim, Tim Martin? No, we we could always.
Correct.
Press that another way. Don Hanson?
Yes.
Christopher Weider, no. The motion doesn't pass. So I have a motion mended for a meeting on March third at seven o'clock to take up the residence of Pine Street. Do I have a second?
Well, you actually, you gotta, you may, someone has to, you know, say your motion has to, you know, you you make a motion, you want one of us to actually support that motion, so I so move it, and then we need a second.
Right. I was trying to get to that point.
I know, I know. So I so move your motion.
Approving my motion, so I let it, let it go, Joe.
Point of order, that's all.
We have a second. I was doing your job for you, Joe, but.
I I so move it. Give me a second, we can move on.
We have a second to the motion.
Second.
Thank you, okay. All those in favor of, say aye, Mike.
Aye.
Aye.
Go ahead, Joe.
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Christopher Weider, aye. Thank you very much. That one was a tough one to get through tonight. All right. Seventy-six, we will now.
You guys cave, you cave.
We will now continue the public hearing for five Lakeshore Drive. When we last met, a few of us, Don Hanson, Tim Martin, myself, did make the walk through the property. And I think we have the applicant here tonight. John, are you out there?
I am.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good, good. Does anybody, has everyone had a chance to revisit this and look at this? Does anybody have any questions for John at this time?
I don't have any questions, Chris, but I did visit, I couldn't make the the walkthrough that we had, but I did take a view of the property from the street when I had a chance as a follow-up.
Great. Great. Any questions, Mike?
No, I I did the same thing as well. I I did a drive-by on my own to become more familiar with the particular site.
Don, any questions for the applicant?
No, the the setback in that area is twenty-five feet, correct? Looked at the garage, correct?
Yes.
Tim, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
All right. The only thought I had on this particular property, John, was have you explored, you know, looking at what you're doing, you're putting a second floor on the property, you're going to sort of do an underground storage area in the front of the house, you're going to rebuild the deck in the rear of the house, and you want it to do the garage. Have you at all explored? And the amount of instruction that's occurring, have you explored literally tearing down the existing house and thinking about rebuilding it on the same foundation, but shifting it so that the garage could go on the left side of the house and with a a variance from the Board of Health for your distance to your septic tank, and obviously a variance from the ZBA for that garage due to the setbacks on that side of your property? Have you at all explored that or what the cost of that would be? Knowing a little bit about construction, you know, sometimes the cost of renovating an existing property becomes a far greater than what it would be to start all over again with modern equipment and with rough framing, plumbing, and electrical work. But have you thought about that at all or explored that at all?
Uh, no, because we actually plan to live in this house while we're doing the construction and doing a total teardown would provide us with no place to live during this.
Okay.
And I do believe that the teardown would be substantially more money the way we would like to stage the construction in this pro, you know, in this project.
Okay. And the other question I have, which I didn't get a chance to look at, is is the the deck in the front of the house, what does that sit on? Is that on piers or is that on a foundation?
It's on piers right now, just like cement sonotubes, but not sonotubes, just ungrade.
Okay. Okay, all right. Anybody else have any questions for the applicant regarding five Lakeshore Drive?
This is Joe. I mean, I have just a statement I made earlier. I was concerned about this application because of the presidents it might set, because we've denied car garage additions like this before because of the encroachment on the setback. So I know we've turned these down before, and I'm concerned that we're in a similar situation where we we have a number of people maybe in town who would not be, would be very concerned that why couldn't they do theirs then?
Well, because they didn't have our lot, honestly.
Well, they had the same situation. They had no room for, they had a garage to one side of the house. And they made the application, and we had to deny them unfortunately. So I I leave that to the rest of the board to discuss. I don't want to be the sole voice of that, but it's just the same concern I had earlier about the presidents it might set, because we had to deny others for this type of an application.
Simply because you had to deny one person does not mean you cannot authorize another.
No, no, I understand. That's why I'm opening it up to the debate, but again, that was just my initial concern right from the get-go.
I think that's something, Joe, we'll we'll take up in deliberation.
Okay.
Public hearing is to take in facts, so I think if the board feels they have enough facts, we can close the public hearing, and we'll certainly address that during deliberations.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Chris, I have a question for the applicant.
Or Tim?
Has the applicant looked at, I think, I think it's a two-car garage proposed, is that correct? Has the applicant looked at making it a one-car garage?
I had discussed with the board that I would be willing to do a one-car garage. We are willing to compromise, but I, when I'm submitting money for permits and variances and things like that, I figure shoot for the two-car garage and see what we might be able to work with. We were also discussing maybe moving in the garage to another portion of the yard, but which would be the left side of the house, if you're looking at it from the street in front of where the septic is and getting a variance for the Board of Health, I believe, to be that closer, to be closer to the septic tank. But the amount of work that would have to go into grading and other things with the way the topography is with the lot now would also be substantial increase in an already large project.
Do you have any cost information of that? What that would be?
At this moment, this is where I've gotten, I mean, I know what it's cost me to get to this point now. I don't know what it's going to get me down the road. I figured that where the driveway is now, putting a garage there would be the most cost-effective.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to the applicant, if 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 a one-car garage were to be built in the proposed area, do you know what the setback from the sideline would be at that point?
Do I know?
Right.
It, I'm, what do I have now, a twenty-two?
Twenty-four by forty?
So I guess it would be a twelve by forty. If it's going to be.
You'd be talking about fifteen feet versus three, I think.
Okay.
Potentially.
Yeah, I just know that we've never approved something so close to as three feet, I believe.
It was always a first time.
Oh, I know, I it's been a long time on this board, and I just, like I said, I just wanted to, you know, make sure we we have that information. Thank you.
Do you get a letter from my neighbor or no?
Say again? Not that I'm aware of. Do we have, we haven't gotten to that point, I think. We have butters on this?
We uh, we haven't got a letter from anybody with regard to a supportive denial of the project.
They were going to submit that they had no problem with it. I just didn't know if you had received it or not.
We did not. Rich or Stephanie, did you receive any letter from a neighbor on Lake, Lake Shore?
I have not received anything at this.
My Wi-Fi would hold up, but I can run my laptop over next door if you want.
I don't think I've received any letters. I guess the the one thing for discussion purposes, in consideration, if the variance is denied, you can't come back. Think about that, right? He's not going to.
Well, that's why I was, that's why I was asking about the exploring of options, because we, in order to leave the hearing open, if there was other options as to building to the other side or or demolition.
Mr. Beverage, can I just ask what the neighbor's last name is, just so I can keep an eye out for it?
Good question. I know Doug.
They have different names.
Yeah, I'm not.
Doug and Karen.
Doug and Karen. That's, I know the dog's names too. I don't know their last name.
No worries, no worries. Thanks.
You.
So do you, is there any?
Well, just, sorry, Mr. Chairman, you might want to, Mr. Beverage, you know, give consideration to once they, so once they close the hearing and then they render a decision, then you're not, it's kind of a not going back situation, so.
But there is another, I mean, when you guys say no, I can move on to another level, can I? I mean, this is not the final say-so.
You can appeal it. Yes, you could appeal to land court.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to adjudicate through the court, but as far as, you know, submitting another variance request? Is that what you're?
No, not another one, just to pursue this one.
So if you get denied, your next approach is to take it, to adjudicate it through the court, Massachusetts judicial system? And I would probably want you to consider, you might want to continue it, talk to legal counsel. Because over, trying to overturn a variance on appeal through the courts is pretty close to impossible. You're, it's not, it's not a, it's not like a special permit, which is a different standard to me. So if you get denied and try to appeal it, it's, it's a rigorous process to try to overturn and costly and could end up with you getting, you know, not the outcome that you're looking for.
What about the one-car garage? Could we amend the variance to a one-car garage if that may be agreeable after you deliberate?
You, you, you need to do it now.
You'd want to do it before the, before the public hearing was closed.
Okay, so it looks like the two-car garage is out. Can we amend it to the one-car garage?
You could, you could ask the board to do that on the plan. Do you want to think it through, or do you want to just?
No, I think I see where it's going, and I'm just going to go with my gut and see if we can get the one-car garage. Like to have to only scrape ice off of one vehicle instead of two, I guess.
All right, so you'd like to amend the application to a one-car garage instead of a two-car garage?
Yes, please, with still the second floor to blend in to the, to the house.
And to be precise. Be precise on the size of the garage, though. Currently, the number is, was it twelve, was it by twenty-four? I'm not looking at the plans at the moment.
The the current is twenty, is twenty-four by forty. So the one-car garage, assuming that he accepted half of that, would be twelve by forty, which would provide then a, a fifteen-foot setback from the property line.
Right, we should, we should clarify that here if we could.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, what I'm I'm looking at is actually your current, your plan shows a twenty-two foot, twenty-two foot, looks like twenty-two foot six inch garage by forty feet.
I just, the driveway was actually the side of our house neighbors, and it's, that's driveway-laden. So that's why I just decided I would build on top of where the driveway footprint was already. So the driveway goes to three feet from the property line. I was just going to put a garage on top of the driveway.
I guess we're trying to determine, was the garage you were originally proposing twenty-two and a half feet, or was it twenty-four feet?
The plan is showing twenty.
It shows twenty-two and a half feet.
Yeah, I'm looking at a plan that shows the garage is twenty-four by forty.
Yeah, that's, that's what's on the screen right now, by the way.
Right, that's what's on the screen, Chris.
Well, I'm looking at his plans that he submitted in the plan. Well, I'm looking at his plans that he submitted and the plans show a twenty two foot garage.
Let me go back into the uh.
Go on to your drawings.
A one point one.
Okay, is that under, oh yeah, okay.
First floor plan.
Yep, okay.
That's not a one point one, but okay, so that looks like twenty two feet to me on the plan.
Looks like twenty two, six to me.
Yeah, well, one plan says twenty two, one plan says twenty two, six.
But I thought the applicant just amended his petition, application to twelve by forty.
I think that's what we're trying to verify, that he wants to, what does he want, twelve feet?
Yeah, so it looks like the, you're right, the two, the the one dimension is twenty two, six, and the other one in the front's twenty two.
Right.
Reverse, so. Is that? So the plan is different than the, yeah, so the plan, so.
Yeah, John, I'm gonna give you this option. I I think, and I, you don't have to have it professionally done. But I think it might be wise for you to go back, you know, verify what the minimum size garage you can accept is. And you can hand on your plans, you know, change those dimensions as well as on the variance request. I think that might be a wise move on your part before we close out the public hearing. Are you open to that?
I am, I'd.
And then we, and then we continue the public hearing till the next meeting?
I don't know if twelve feet versus twelve, six is really that much of a big deal for me. I mean, these are.
You may want thirteen or fourteen. I mean, uh, you, you, again, you have to look at, I would, I would, I would take a look at what one car garages. Uh, a lot of, a lot of forty B projects have one car garages and there's sort of a minimum a size that most developers use, so you may want to look into that. I think that will help you.
Okay.
Uh, so I think it might be wise to continue the hearing until we uh, till you have a chance to do that. And just, again, you don't have to, you don't have to have it all typed up. You can hand do it and just put your signature on it. And I think that might help, okay?
Okay.
Does that work for you?
I would like to just like remind that the the footprint of the driveway is still three feet to the property line.
Understand.
Okay, just. Okay, so I can still technically have cars parked all the way up to the side of the.
A driveway, John, does doesn't take the same, uh, what's the word I want, Rich, doesn't take the same uh, position as a physical structure, okay? Whether it has a dirt floor or it's got an asphalt uh, base to it. A driveway is not considered a permanent structure under zoning laws.
Okay.
And I think, John, if you, if you got a little bit of time, put some work into, um, again, the costs of if you move the garage to the other side, what the cost would be if you had to do any work on the septic system. Again, as everybody has mentioned, this is a quasi judicial hearing. So you want to make sure that what you present to the board are facts that can be supported if you have to move forward from the, from this board. And uh, having that information in hand will certainly make help your case. So at this time, I would ask for a motion to continue the public hearing for lot five Lake Shore Drive until March seventeenth at seven o'clock PM.
So moved, so moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mike Colisa.
Aye.
Joe Sebastiano.
Aye.
Don Hanson.
Aye.
Tim Martin.
Aye.
Christopher Weider, aye. Thanks again, John. I think Rich can help you with some of that, or at least guide you in the right direction on some of this, but I think it's, I think it's wise. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, John.
All right, at this time, it is seven forty five and we have a, another public hearing for eight West Birch Road for three variances, a deck and a screen. Joe, could you uh, read into the record? Do we, is the applicant here for this?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Joe, could you read into the record, the public hearing?
Do I have to read the opening part about the?
No.
Okay, so I'm gonna go right into, uh, it, we're, we're here for the hearing for David Colin, George Drill, excuse me if I pronounce that wrong. At seven thirty PM for three variances pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty eight, section nine is amended and section E one of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, one variance to allow the construction of a screen porch on an existing concrete pad, which does not violate the side setback requirements of twenty five feet by point, oh, excuse me, which does violate side setback requirement of twenty five feet by point eight feet. And two variants for the purpose of keeping an existing deck that was built without a permit, which does violate the side setback requirement of twenty five feet by twelve point nine feet. And which does violate the front yard setback requirement of fifty feet by forty nine point four. Property is located eight West Birch Road, assesses map nineteen, block sixty six, lot five, in the R three zoning district. Sorry if I butchered that.
Got a problem.
Thanks, Joe. Welcome, David. Uh, the one thing I will say before we start, David, is that uh, this is, this is, I feel this is going to definitely require a site visit.
Okay.
Just based on the facts and we, I don't think there's a lot of drawings here. We have a few drawings, but I think um, this will require a site visit when the weather is a a little bit better. So, you know, not that the hearing is pretty much sure, but I think that would be a prerequisite where we close out the public hearing here. But um, why don't I let you present to us your uh, your, your case? Go ahead.
So I think I, you know, gave you all a written narrative that tries to put into context some of the issues that we've had with the property lines specifically. When we purchased the house back in the summer of twenty twelve, um, I think the listing is in the packet that I sent you all as well, the variance application. Um, the house was listed along with a garage and with a deck. Um, and you know, I know that mortgage surveys are not intended to be replacements for certified plot plans or other kinds of zoning instruments. Uh, but at the very least, we expected it to be accurate, you know, to the, to where the deck was, you know, so we had, um, you know, we misunderstood where the actual front lot line of the property was, you know, thinking that it was at least the area around the deck. Um, after we moved in, uh, we realized that the, the deck and the garage, um, I don't know if the, it was clear from the, the old photo, the listing that I sent you, but there was um, a pressure treated pine deck sitting on top of where the garage is, um, that I think had been a DIY job, um, from two owners prior to us. And when we moved in, we realized that the roof on the garage had failed and that the deck was not all that structurally sound. So my wife and I made a decision that when our finances permitted, we would have the roof on the garage replaced and then we would replace the deck as well. Um, so we started doing that in, I don't remember the exact years. I think that I put them in the variance application. Uh, but we replaced the roof on the garage and at that time, the original deck was torn down. And then when we did that, um, we saved up money for another couple of years and then had a deck constructed. We decided to have it closer to the house, um, rather than on top of the garage for, you know, a couple of different reasons. And at that time, um, owing to, you know, partly us getting bad advice and also, you know, sort of, you know, toxic combination of that plus us doing our own homework on whether or not a permit was required, we failed to secure a permit for the deck at that time. Um, so it, it, we didn't get a permit for it, but we had no intention of, you know, sneaking one by the town or anything like that. Uh, if we had, we wouldn't be applying for, you know, a permit for a structure that, you know, would be right next to the deck and that everyone could come see. Um, so it's not, there wasn't any attempt to, you know, to deceive the town by us not securing a permit in that first case. Um, we wanted to build a screened in porch over the existing concrete pad there, uh, which is what kicked this whole process off. Um, and, you know, once we got the certified plot plan, um, at the, you know, at the request of the building department, we realized that the front lot line for the property was much, much closer to the house than we thought it was. Um, and in fact, that the garage was not on our property at all, but it seems to be on town property. And, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's not funny.
No, it's, 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 it was very much a surprise to us, you know, like having, you know, bought a house that we thought included a garage and a deck to find out that neither one of those things was technically on our property. I don't know when it was constructed exactly. Uh, but it was actually listed with the house twice, I think, um, when it was sold in two thousand and seven and again in twenty twelve when it was sold to us. Um, so that's sort of, I'm happy to answer questions where I can, but that's sort of the general, you know, summary of how we got to where we are. And so the, the matter of the garage and what to do about that whole thing is not even on the, the docket for today, I don't think. Um, but yeah, it's not a, not a great situation, unfortunately.
Okay, Colin, I have, I have a question that maybe I didn't understand. I, I think I heard when the, you, the deck on top of the garage was failing, so you decided to rebuild that. And I understand the garage and that deck is not part of what we're discussing today.
That's correct, yeah.
I heard you say you then, because you were building a deck on top of the garage, you tore down an existing deck.
So there was an existing deck on top of the garage when we purchased the house.
Right.
And so it was, it was a pressure treated pine deck, um, sitting on a few short lengths of four by four that were sort of, just toenailed into the roof. And the, the roof underneath the deck had failed. So we, the, the main goal was to replace the roof so that we had a usable garage, you know, because it was, it was essentially chipmunk storage, like that's, that's all that was really happening in there at that point. And it, like, whenever it rained, the water came right through. Because what they had done is, again, this was a DIY job.
Colin, I don't want to interrupt you. I think the question is, was there a deck behind the garage?
There was not a deck behind the garage. No, there was a deck on top of the garage.
Okay.
We, we thought at the time when we, when we put the deck in its current location, that we wouldn't have a problem because we were moving it closer to the house.
Okay. And this, Don, do you have another question?
So there is, even though we're not talking about the garage, I'm just trying to understand the relationship of the decks. So you didn't put another deck on top of the garage?
That's correct.
All right, so what I'm hearing is you, in effect, thought your uh, your, 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 your property, your existing property and your existing debt was on top of the garage, which you thought was part of your property and uh, was within the fifty foot setback of the road.
That's correct. I don't think we were aware of the setback at the time, but we thought that it was, a-again, this is a result of someone like me who doesn't know about zoning, you know, doing his own homework and making a mistake in this case. And so we thought because it was between the garage, which we thought we owned and the house, that it wouldn't be a problem, you know, to, to build a deck there.
And um, and, and one last question, just trying to understand this is where that circular line there is that seems to run right up to the deck. What does that line denote?
That is the front lot line.
So that's the right away boundary?
Okay.
For, for Birch Road, that here, this curve.
Rich, if you show the, the one page prior to this plan, um, you'll see sort of a street view that might give you a better picture, Don. I have it here if you want me to share it, Rich.
Sure, yep. Please, that would be great.
Everybody see that, okay?
Oh. And, and, and so I'm gonna ask this again. So are you saying right now that garage that's sitting there that I'm looking at, that you have nicely rebuilt, so it's not leaking, is on town property?
Rich, you can confirm this, but I believe it is.
Yes. So it's, it's, uh, it's related, so I am in, in consultation with town council about the garage and Colin as well where, um, that the, where, where the, the ultimate outcome in that garage. So the ultimate outcome in the garage could be that's need to be removed because it's on the town, uh, right away.
Rich, how long has that garage been there?
We, so looking, appears, we don't have an exact, I don't have a building permit record to know exactly when that garage was constructed, but it, it would, I would think it's, you know, relatively fair to say it was probably kind of co- concurrent with the house that was built, I suspect. But I don't have any record to verify that. Um, I do know from arrow photos, it's been there. It's certainly been there more than ten years, you know, so it's past that timeframe from a zoning matter, but it's really more of an encroachment issue. Um, that we have to, we need to square away because actually right now I think he's being taxed on it, which is not even on his property, so. That's, we still gotta solve this piece, that piece of the puzzle. And.
Okay, I, I understand. And Tim, I'm gonna ask you a question.
It's Colin, by the way, sorry for the record.
No, 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 I'm gonna ask Tim a question. Tim, are you there?
Hi, Don.
Yeah, I, I'm just curious, uh, relative to, to uh, Massachusetts state law, in other words, if a, if a a structure is built on like the example of town property and goes unnoticed or, you know, whatever identified, at some point in time, I can't think of the name of the, of the law, but doesn't it actually?
Adverse possession?
Yes.
You, you can't get adverse possession against the sovereign, whether it's the state or the city or a town.
You can't.
Cannot.
Really? With respect, I think I looked up some case law and I believe it doesn't apply against the state, but it can apply against municipalities.
I could, I could be wrong on that. I could check that.
If you're not getting paid, so you don't have to answer the question. And it's obviously not for this board to deliberate. We have our own, our own problems to worry about. Don, it would be a good project for you, Don.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, but certainly, okay. That, in effect, could realter the property line. I mean, we have a number of variances here we're looking at. And all of them, when you first look at them, seem insurmountable relative to the existing zoning laws within the town. However, all right, to not, um, uh, provide Colin, you with any, uh, legal knowledge of which I have none, all right? Uh, it would appear that if a, a court were to determine that based on whatever the term you used before, Tim, that, um, in effect, that the property line of Colin extended to the garage, that would affect the way that we would determine the uh, potential variances because the setbacks would be changed significantly.
Well, again, not being a lawyer and not wanting to deliberate yet, you've got to also remember the garage is an accessory building because it's not attached to the house, Don. Where accessory, accessory buildings are viewed slightly differently when you're looking at setbacks. So.
I, I, I understand that, but right now, in looking at this uh, line, it looks like the deck from where I sit is like within a foot or on the line of the property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
But uh, but that's why I think a site visit is gonna be imperative here.
It's less than a foot, so, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I can weigh in, I, you know, we're talking about variances here and, and as everybody knows, the criteria are topography, size of the lot, soil conditions. I mean, we can talk about this until the cows come home, but I, I really want to get out and see this property since our, our determinations are gonna be made on topography and, and shapes and soil conditions and, and those criteria. So uh, dimensional issues aren't important right now until we can get the topography and size of the lot squared away.
I, I, I appreciate that, Mike. I just want to make one comment, that the zoning board never in the history of Norfolk has ever had a zero variance, in other words, uh, a structure, um, right on the lot line, period. Never happened. And that's really what this applicant is asking for, yet we're also saying that the lot line might be back X number of feet. So I just want to remind the board of that because I would hate to lead the applicant down a path and then have a say and have our legal counsel say, well, you can't do that. You've never done that. We've never done that. You can't establish that type of precedent.
Okay. Colin, Colin, do you have a, um, have you had a, have you had the property surveyed?
Uh, yes, I believe that there is a certified plot print. Uh, yes, I believe that there is a certified plot print, plot plan from two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
That's it right there. That's Dunn McKenzie plot plan.
Okay, great. Um, are, are the markings on the property, can you identify them when we get there?
Um, I don't believe so. There is, um, I know that off of, off to the right side of the house, which would be the south side of the house, um, I think that there is a, a little orange flag in the tree somewhere, but I couldn't do it. I mean, I, I don't know where the markings are now.
I, I would talk to them and see if they can identify the markings for you. Ideally, they're supposed to identify them, so you, you know where they are. I would say they shouldn't be charging you for it because they came out and did it. They should actually have eggs in the ground, but you may want to, you may want to see if you can identify those when we come out because there are a number of those, um, that we, we'll be addressing. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue the public hearing. Um, well, Colin, we're going to do it to the seventeenth. Obviously, the weather will, will obviously affect that, but right now, I think I'd ask for a motion to continue public hearing for a West Birch Road till the seventeenth of March at seven fifteen.
Just before we move, can I ask a question?
Is that, Tim?
Yes.
You can do it during discussion, Tim. So you, you want to hold up one second? We'll first get a motion in a second. Is that all right?
Yeah. Okay. I, I so moved the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Right then.
Okay, discussion. Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. Uh, to, to the applicant, I, I'm just looking at your submittal and, and my, my question's going to be, between now and the next time we look at this, could you, could you review your information to see if you received, if you had the plot plan drawn when you purchased the property? That's quite common. The reason I ask that is, on the submittal that you've provided to us, at least on the listing agreement, um, the assess, it refers to a plan that shows sixteen thousand one hundred and sixty square feet, is shown as figure two on the submittal. And then the plan we just hit on the screen, um, shows, indicates more than that, but it looks to be the exact same configuration. So it, I just can't square the two of them. So that should, that shows sixteen thousand five sixty-seven square feet.
Okay.
Listing, this, the, the, the diagram looks very similar with that radius curve, but the lot looks smaller. So I'm trying to figure out the square footage of the lot. And I think maybe if you had a plot plan from when you purchased the property, that, that may shed some light on it.
The only thing we have is the mortgage survey, which is also in the documents that I submitted to you, which is, I, I know it's not nearly as exact as what you get with, uh, the plot plan.
Yeah.
Uh, but it should be, I think it might be, if it's, if this is the, or maybe this is, it's not in this series of documents, but it should be in at least the, the variance for the deck. I think it's in that packet.
Okay.
So if you scroll further down, it's one of the figures attached at the end.
Yeah, that's the one that shows the sixteen thousand one sixty.
That one there, yeah.
That, that's the one.
Just a.
But, but you, you may not even have been aware. I don't know if you had financing when you purchased, you had a plot plan drawn.
We did not have a separate plot plan drawn at the time.
Okay.
I don't, I don't believe that we did. It, it wasn't in the closing paperwork. I looked through everything.
Okay.
Um, I have Donna J raising her hand. Would the chair like to recognize members of the public at this time?
Sure, we can do that, sure.
We, we do have a motion on the floor, just.
Yeah, we do. Well, it's Donna, so we can, we can definitely, we'll, we'll hear Donna, sure.
Hi, Donna Jones, not in a butter. Um, just an observation from looking at the online Main Street maps. It looks like the, there's part of the building that's across into the neighbor's yard. And I, I don't know if the data I'm seeing on this, the picture I'm seeing on the screen is true, but the committee has addressed, seems to have addressed, where is the lot line? So I didn't know if it, there's a problem with the, whatever the structure is on the right, which may be the deck.
So the, the plan that's on the screen, uh, what was prepared, done by a survey, the, the plans that, you know, we, you're referring to Donna on our map, on our GIS system.
Yes.
Their assessor level, they're not, they're not for commands purposes and they're not, it's, they do not have that le- level of accuracy at all to them, uh, which is sometimes dangerous for people to get a comfort level that they're that accurate. They're not. Um, so they don't substitute the plan in front of you, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
If there's one last detail that I can note here, um, just by way of, um, you know, distinguishing the, the distance from the, the front, uh, right-of-way versus the distance to the road. I asked Dunn McKenzie over the phone the other day, how far the deck is from the road itself, which is about thirty-six feet. You know, so we're talking about a gap of about thirty-five feet or so from the road to where the deck itself is. So it's not, I mean, I, I understand that it's, it's, you know, practically on top of the, you know, the front, um, lot line as far as the right-of-way goes, but it is, it's set back fairly far from the road. And it's, it's not really, you know, encroaching on the neighbor's property in any kind of meaningful way because it's a very heavily wooded hill. Um, I think that Rich should have also received emails from a couple of our neighbors, um, you know, in support of the variance applications. And what we've really tried to do is, you know, we bought this older house and we've been trying to improve it and, and make it a, a nice-looking part of the neighborhood. And, you know, both the, the, the deck and the porch would go a long way towards doing that and allowing us to enjoy the property that we bought. We just ended up, you know, getting into more than we bargained for with the whole, you know, deck and front lot line thing. So, I mean, we're, we're happy to, you know, obviously with the deck, if there's any, um, you know, sort of retrofitting that we need to do to make it compliant with building codes, we're happy to do that. You know, we want to, we want to play by the rules and get this stuff done right. And we're just hoping you all can help with that.
Yeah. All right. So we have a motion on the table. We, um, have a discussion, uh, like roll call vote to continue the public hearing. Mike Caliza.
Yes.
Uh, Joe Sebastian.
Yes.
Don Hanson.
Yes.
Jim Martin.
Yes.
And Christopher Weider, yes. Uh, what we'll do is, uh, we will get back with you, Colin, on a date for a walkthrough, once we see what the weather's going to do, hopefully before the seventeenth. And we'll, uh, we'll actually identify that through a public hearing and, um, have that scheduled, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Did you give it time? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Did you time for the seventeenth?
Seven fifteen.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
Thank you very much, Colin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, it is eight oh eight. Uh, but this time, we are going to discuss F five A, which is accessory buildings, zoning bylaw, which is a nice segue. And, um, I'll turn this over to Rich McCarthy. And Rich, you can, uh, give us a little background as to what Planning Board and you have been discussing, why you've come with this.
Sure. So, but start off by way of background. I'll, uh, what I'll do is I'll screen share, um, to put up the, the bylaws as we, to talk as I'm going through this. Hold on a second. Let me just, uh. Can you see all this screen? Okay?
Yep.
All right. So, um, where this actually started was, I was approached, um, from the Building Department to, um, make an amendment to the accessory building provision, the bylaw, which is the F five A that you see on the screen, to just clarify that the front, we're talking about the front yard setback, uh, and in the, currently in the bylaw. So you see this is highlighted in black, uh, because the, the proposal is to add that word setback. Unlike, I'll just scroll down so you can see it. Um, this is the existing provisions, F five C relative to swimming pools. It already had within it front yard setback. So it was, was clear as far as what, you know, front yard set, you know, what the setback for swimming pools would be in relation to the front yard. Um, so we started with clarifying, uh, the idea to put in setback to ensure, or actually to, to make it clear that the setback is the, you know, the fifty-foot setback, because that's the front yard setback line, is fifty feet from the front property line from, from the left and the right, um, property lines. And so as we started to get into the discussion, it was like, what it, where we went was, how is it being interpreted today? And so the Building Department, how they interpreted it as of today, is that anything between the fifty-foot setback and up to the house is essentially the required front yard. But it didn't, our bylaw, because it didn't say setback in here, so it was unclear, let, leave, we're open to interpretation that the front yard would be from the front property line to the front plane of a house. Um, so that was where we started to try to clarify that wasn't the case. Um, and in, in so doing, in that discussion with the planning board, um, there was, I have some examples I'll show you as we go through. Um, I'm going to just switch over to.
Rich, would a, would a shed be an example of this?
Yeah. Just a shed, yep. Accessory structure.
Okay.
Garage, a, uh, well, actually, even, so the other, the other thing that really kind of expanded, looking at this, is those structures that you see that people have little carports, little hut, those actually are accessory buildings on the, under our definition and, uh, I'm correct, I'm wrong, I think even the building code. So they've, they, they fall in the category as building as well. So that's where, um, we would include those as well. So if you look at, I'm going to bounce a little bit, so apologize to you, to the board to this, but, so in, uh, section E, which deals with dimensional issues, this, you know, lists front, it says yard, front, side, and rear. And then it talks about, as you can read what's on the screen, um, as far as what that required yarded, yard is. And then within the zoning bylaw, it, um, directs you to this drawing A, which is the illustration. So I'm just going to show you, um, that next. So this, again, this is what gives you an idea vi- of visually to represent what required yards are and aren't, you know, side, rear, front, et cetera. There's a through lot, um, corner lot, you have the two required front yards, et cetera. So that was, that was the basis which the Building Department operating on as far as interpreting where accessory buildings would be in relation to, um, the required front yard setback. Um, but there was, there was a compelling opinion or adverse opinion, sorry, uh, that, well, the planning board's like, well, we don't, we're not seeing that necessarily is the case. We see is the front is the, um, the front property line all the way up to that front plane of the, uh, of the home. And so that, that was how they kind of view that as we embarked on this kind of discussion about clarifying this one piece of the zoning bylaw. So as part of that discussion, then I, and I'll show you some examples of, you know, accessory buildings that are in the, that we would see in the required front yard, or excuse me, in front of the house. Let's just go that. You'll see the illustration of it. Um, and actually, you know, I might as well show you right now. It would help as I get to this next part of the discussion, so.
I have to admit, if it says never in the front yard, period, that would tell me everything up to the front of the house.
Yeah, so that's not, point taken, right? So that's not how it has been interpreted, passed down, the interpretation.
Right.
Of front yard.
Yeah, some people have like a two-hundred-yard front setback. I mean, they have a well over two-hundred feet going from the curb to their house.
Right. So this, this actually is kind of one of those good examples. You have, uh, that we did use in illustration. This is on three fifty-eight Main Street. So the house is well back off of Main Street. And this garage here is essentially, if you say, or interpret it to be the, all the way up to the house, it's in the front yard, although it's well, well back off of, uh, Main Street. So that, that's an example. And it actually, this pool's not the greatest example to show you, but on a corner lot, uh, well, this has a rear, so this is, this is essentially a through lot here. So if you can, it doesn't, so this has two front. So that, that's another example of the challenge of it. Um, and I just want to give you one more example, then I'll go the next one. Then there's one on, uh, I wish I, here's one on Cleveland, seventy-eight Cleveland Street. I'm trying to remember. This is a hundred, at least a hundred.
Yeah, well over fifty feet.
Yeah, it's well, it's well over fifty feet, but yeah, it's a garage, uh, uh, accessory building, which is a garage that would be in the required front yard. So the, this, the, the end result of the discussion with the planning board was, we, we would want to see the revision, yes, clarify, you know, setback. So we, we would say, okay, front yard setback. So we know that that's the fifty-foot dimension off the street. But then, any accessory building from the fifty-foot to that front plane of, of the house, uh, would need to seek a special permit through the zoning board of appeals. So that's what's, what you see on the screen. With the discussions which I've had with Chris as well, and I know he will as soon as I stop speaking for a moment, is that you have situations that arise where you have much smaller lots, and there are instances where somebody might want to seek, seek through, not a variance, through a special permit, to be able to put accessory building in the, in, closer to the street. So essentially, you know, the front yard setback, the, the, excuse me, the front property line up to that fifty-foot setback. And there are examples of the smaller lots where, uh, and we have two right now. So there's two, there's two residents on King Street that have been cited for a violation of the setback. And they have those two, um, carport structures. And actually, I'm trying to remember the, the addresses. I want to say, it might be ten and twelve. I can't remember off the top of my head. I, if I don't, if those aren't the right address, I certainly would have you, you know, drive by, take a look at it. But in both of those cases, those little cart, those little hut, violate, violate the front yard setback. So for them, they would need to go for a variance. So the thought being, is to give additional flexibility for a homeowner based on circumstance of the site, you know, the lot, um, the house location and topography, et cetera, a way to go to the ZBA to be able to try to seek, um, a special permit for accessory building, um, within the front yard setback. Now, this is not like the one you just talked about, Lake Shore Drive, because that was attached. But, for example, if that was, you know, detached, um, that may be somewhat relevant situation. So the planning board wasn't okay with that idea. They, they didn't want to go that far. They said, look, no, um, we're okay with, we, we believe, yes, we need to correct this thing. So we clarified setback, but, um, we believe that you should go for that special permit between the front, setback to fifty feet up to the principal building. And so that's what's on the screen before you for F, F five A. Um, now.
Rich, that seems, unless it, it seems to make sense, but what if that condition does exist already? Meaning someone has something well beyond the setback, but also still in the front yard between the setback and the front of the plane of the house? If that exists, though, that would be a grandfathered situation to this rule?
Yeah, they would be grandfathered.
Okay, as of the date of this rule being employed?
Yeah, provided they got a, you know, they got a building permit, they're grandfathered after six years. Well, yeah.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so they'd be grandfathered. Um, but the only, so, you know, giving this further consideration, um, I think with this provision, I think we need to go back to, um, F five C, talking about swimming pools, because, um, and the planning board didn't entertain that the other night, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to go back to them to add this to consideration because it would, wouldn't make any sense logically to think about this, to say, okay, if you got a, you're putting a, a pool in that front yard between, you know, the fifty and a hundred, you, you should have to go for a special permit. I mean, if you're going to go for a little shed, why wouldn't a pool be similarly treated? Um, so it's like you can put a pool in by right in that front yard between the fifty and, and the house, but yet you got to go for a special permit for your little pool shed or cabana. Um, so what I'm here before you tonight, there's two things. One is your thoughts. I, I don't expect you to have a complete answer tonight if you, if you don't. Your thoughts, I, I don't expect you to have a complete answer tonight, if you, if you don't, but. The idea of just requiring a special permit, period, so from the front property line up to the house, they all would be special permits. For accessory buildings, and likewise, I would say treating similar pool, swi- simi- uh, excuse me. Swimming pool is the same way. Now pause right there, the moment, so, now, like Chris, I mean, he's got. Good frontline experience on this stuff too, we, we've been talking about this, so, I don't know if you wanted to chime in, Chris, yet, or.
No, I think you, uh, I think you've exhausted it.
So, so I guess, I, I, I'm confused.
Alright.
Am I mute? No, I'm, I'm confused, so if, if, if my house is up, I have to use actual numbers. Uh, if my house is, uh. Hopefully, and. Sorry, if, if, uh, the important call, if, if my, if my house is a hundred and fifty feet back from, uh, the road, okay?
Yep.
And, and, um, right now, if I wanna put a pool in, uh, front of my house. As long as it's no closer than fifty feet to the road, I got a hundred feet that I can or cannot, under current zoning laws, locate a pool.
Under current, you can, you can, under current law.
I, I can, okay?
Yes.
A, and given the fact that the planning board talked about putting accessory buildings. If that same situation occurs, should have a special permit. Then you're saying, then if you wanna put a pool in that same scenario, you would need a special permit, correct?
That's what I'm suggesting, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, it's, yeah.
And, and, and I'm trying to understand the rationale behind that. If we were comfortable up into this point of allowing people, as long as they were fifty feet back. And they had, um, the proper setbacks from their own building to put a pool in their front yard, why suddenly we would say. That they need to have a special permit to do that?
And you, and another door, I'll call option for you, if you will, in this discussion, was, uh, I had proposed. Before this change that you see there, just strictly speaking about F five A, was the, um. To, I would, I clarified putting the setback in, so now we said, we know what the front yard setback is, is that zero to fifty feet. Um, so, anything between fifty feet in the home would be by right, you know, you would, you meet the. You know, as long as the height to the accessory structure wasn't any closer, but, um, not adding a special permit component to it. What I did add to it was, which discussion was allowing in those cases where. Somebody wanted to go closer, so from fifty, you know, I'm not saying zero, that's probably most likely, but. Closer than fifty, a special permit option, so it was essentially two zones, basically, a by right, which was. Essentially what we're doing today, but clarifying that is the front yard setback, and then a new provision. For cases where, you know, the lot's smaller, unique features, so forth, that there's a, a vehicle for somebody to, um. Seek a special permit, as opposed to a variance, that's where I, that was my previous proposal to the planning board, which. They weren't, they weren't comfortable with that, so.
Did you say they were, were not?
Were not, no, so. I said to them the other day, on the ninth of February, I was gonna have a discussion with the ZBA to kind of vet this thing out, because. I don't want to, um, you know. I have like a little split opinion about, I think, I think we should. Provide a little bit, keep the same, but provide some option, they, they disagree, which is fine, obviously, that's their, their, their job, but, um, you as the ZBA. I'm, I'm sure have seen more of these cases, or aware of more of these cases with accessory structures, and might have a different opinion, maybe not, but. At least wanted to have a discussion with you to then see your thoughts, and then maybe have a, I'll call a conference, so to speak. Um, with the planning board to see, maybe think about a different, a blended approach.
I think, I think you brought up a good point, Rich, because, in other words, I'm driving down a road and there's a, a three hundred feet between the road and the house. And what you're saying right now is, uh, fifty feet off the road, I can throw a pool in, no problem. But I wanna throw a garage suddenly, fifty feet off the road, alright, and I got a problem, correct?
Yeah.
Right? So, why can I put a pool in and out of garage, okay? You could, you could make a case that one is uglier than the other, or less aesthetic, or whatever, but you wanna clarify that.
Right. Right, the whole idea is to clarify the bylaws, we have, uh, different bylaw for swimming pools than we do for accessory structures. Accessory structures with, Joe mentioned at the very beginning, our bylaw says no in the front yard. The building department has been actually interpreting that to mean. No in the front yard setback, so what we're trying to do is clarify this to say that. You can, the only way you can put an accessory building in your front yard, whether it be. Within the setback or outside of the setback, is by special permit by the zoning board. And what this will allow is, and I think we've seen it with some of the applications tonight, is, you know, there's parts of town. That have very small lots, that whole Leland, uh, Popolatic, Lake Shore Drive are very small lots. Some of these people would like to put carports in, or small accessory buildings, and do them very tastefully. Uh, this allows them to come before us, and via the special permit feature, be heard. Uh, if it's a Quonset hut, we may decide we don't like that, and we will, we can say no, but if it's something that's done aesthetically. Appropriate, it gives us the right to do that, and that's the whole purpose of this, it's to, to leave more.
Only, only thing, the only thing it opens up, Chris, is suddenly we become the designer review board, okay? And.
We don't become the design review board, we continue to be the zoning board.
But I'm saying. Structures look like?
Again?
We, 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 we are suddenly interpreting, uh, as you said, a great example, we don't like the looks of a Quonset hut, but. You know what, if you're gonna put something in that's a little miniature of your house, that's one and a half stories high. And it looks pretty good, that's fine, it can sit in the middle of your front yard. You, you, and, and, and I don't think that is really what the zoning board should be doing. I don't think we should be interpreting aesthetics, is what I'm trying to get at, we should be interpreting. Um, uh, you know, distance, uh, and, 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 uh, I call it, we should be. Interpreting objective issues, not subjective issues.
Well.
Making sense, anybody else? Tim, Joe?
I, I, I agree that we're not gonna be getting into aesthetics and paint colors and trim and all that, but. On some of these lots, when they're much smaller lots, um, I think we stick to kind of a zoning criteria that we always apply. And, and look at, and, and look at what the neighborhood commands as far as lot size. And setbacks to these areas, I don't, I, I, I understand your point on it, could open up that people put things out there that, you know. I may not like, or I may like color or style, but that's not what we're gonna. We, we, we're not gonna discuss that, we're gonna find out at the location of that structure. You know, taking into the lot lines and things like that makes sense, I'm not gonna get into aesthetics either, I don't think we're going down that path. So I, I, I'm not gonna, you know, that's not gonna be important to me on the, on the color scheme or the design of the. Of the, the final product.
It's, well, I just, I, I, I was reaction to Chris's comment, and we don't want someone to put a Quonset hut up, okay? Versus somebody putting something else up, and again, it gets to the fact that we're supposed to be, uh, adjudicating. Uh, things that are objectives.
Right, and I think we get to a discussion on those on a case by case basis, you can remind Chris of that. And say, well, we don't wanna go down this path, do we? But I think it's very difficult to, to, to do that in a zoning bylaw, I agree with you, but I think. When, when you look at the setbacks and the height and things like that, we can certainly do that. Um, just like any other thing, if some, if, if we do a variance or a special permit and someone puts an addition on. I don't think we're determining paint colors, but. The neighbor may say, gee, I didn't know, I was okay with being ten feet away, but I didn't want it to be that color ten feet away, we don't, we don't get into that.
Yeah, I, I think this is Joe, I think one thing that's, you know, evident from this is that from the very beginning, there was an intent, I think with F five A. That there wouldn't be any accessory buildings in front of houses, right? And now, we, now we realize some people have accessory buildings in front of houses, cuz it's been somewhat interpreted. As long as it wasn't within the setback, cuz some houses have a lot of property, of course. I guess the idea is how to get the clarification right in this case, because it does make sense that some very deep properties. Might need an accessory building off their driveway, whether it's a little garage or a shed, you know, I know some people want, might wanna gazebo or something, but. Um, like I said, then what would this mean, though, these rules that we're talking about and these clarifications, if you have such a small piece of property? I think it was clear to me that you said that if it's within the setback, though, it has to be a variance, am I correct, Chris? Within the fifty foot setback is a variance, right?
My yard would have to be a variance.
Right, it would be a, only a special permit from the setback to the house.
No, currently, currently, you, you, anything in the front yard from the street to the house would be a variance, anything, currently.
Anything, yeah, yeah, I understood, okay, yes, yes, any, yeah, I guess, I'm just struggling with the fact that I know that we're not trying to promote a bunch of accessory buildings in front of. Houses that are closer to the street lines.
No, and, and so the, at least the existing, so if you look at F five C. It was, you know, for whatever reason, they, they didn't put setback under the accessory building, but it already.
Could that be, could that be because some people would put like just a stand up pool in front of a house, if that was the best place to put it? You know, and that's how that clarified it, that, you know, let's say you wanted to put up a pool for your kids in the front of the house, that's the best piece, part of your property. That took care of that issue, if you know what I mean, I'm just thinking that, I'm going back to what was on their mind, you know, all those years ago.
Yeah.
Because I could see like a pool that, yeah, I mean, I don't see a lot of pools in front of houses around here, but. I'm thinking that, you know, there was maybe, okay, if you wanna put up a pool, and at least it stays behind the setback, but. Both worthy of clarification, of course.
Yeah, so, it's, at the minimum, I guess, so from the billing department, essentially, they were just. Looking to, really, just the first paragraph, basically, okay, so. If, to insert setback to be consistent with this pool provision. Not necessarily going to say the front yard is literally the, you know, the front property line all the way up. To the front edge of the, you know, the plane of the house, I don't. It seems like the bylaw, as I mentioned to you earlier, when you go, when you cross, actually, I'm sorry, room diagram.
Either way, either way, if you're following the rules, it comes to the ZBA, if it was coming to us for a variance or coming to us for a special permit. It's, it still comes before us, correct? If it's being done correctly.
No, it would, but I'm just saying that, you know, the. The standard to me for variance is much different than, as you just kind of. You know, vetted out a little bit tonight on a few different things than a special permit.
I mean, the nice thing about a special permit, going back to Don and, and Tim, is, one thing, guys, remember is. I realized when we do a forty B, we, we sit in the role of a number of different boards. And when we do forty Ps, we do get into style, structure, what things are looking like. Uh, but I think when we're looking at these, we have to look at, the special permit allows neighbors. It allows input, which is really what, in this case, we're looking for, you know, if your neighbors don't wanna see. Structures in the front yard, you know, they're gonna have input to these, but we give everybody the right to at least explore it. So we prevent, we don't prevent everybody, because they live on a small lot, for not being able to do something. And no, we're not gonna sit there and pick colors, we're not gonna pick styles, but we're gonna look at it. And how it looks to the lot, how it looks to the lot lines, we're gonna look at the heights, we are gonna look at those things. Um, just like we look at now, we look at driveways, where they are. So, you know, if your driveway's right there and you wanna build something right there, it may be appropriate. So I think that's why it, and it, it really is, it's opening up the door. For those people in those parts of town, that we don't have special zoning bylaws for, to take into account. That there's smaller lots, or that they were campgrounds and turned into lots, River Road, um, Lake Shore, down by Mira Lake. Uh, that they can't do these things, and, uh, you know, again, the alternative would be to pass new zoning. That sort of, you know, earmarks certain parts of town, and we change the entire zoning bylaws. You know, from the fifty foot setbacks to twenty five foot setbacks, I don't think the town is ready to do that. So this is a way that we don't just say no to these people, but we let them at least present their case. Um, King Street, you know, without getting into great details, you know, th- there's a, one property on King Street has a couple of the fabric huts. They've been there for a long time, but they are in the front yard, um, no one's ever complained. Uh, happens to be right across from the junior high school, so it's a very active areas, and, uh, a, a neighbor then built a nice. Uh, carport, did it aesthetically attractive, uh, matched it into his driveway. Uh, it's actually very hard to even see from the street, even though it's probably within twelve feet of the street. Um, he's got Arbivitis planted in front of it, uh, things, some of the things we would require on a forty B. Uh, but he's obviously in violation of our bylaw. You know, and so that's what we're trying to, to look at, is, is there a way to give some relief? Via a special permit, which isn't a stringent, to obviously topography, shape and size, and soil conditions. Uh, for these people, because of the changing of our town, it's no longer campgrounds over on, uh, River Road. Their houses, people are living there, they have families, and, um, and what I've heard is from, especially a couple of members of this board, is, they wanna. Encourage those people to be able to do these type of things, so that was the idea behind this.
Okay. Alright, sense. I'm, I'm, I'm coming around, Chris. And it would still require a building permit, correct, Chris?
Absolutely, uh, I, I think anything bigger than ten by twenty.
Right.
Right, anything bigger than a shed would require, you know, yeah.
But it still would require us to give the special permit first.
Yes, we'll meet this up, but, so. So.
What do we get next?
Yeah, so the next is, um, do, am I getting a sense about the, uh. So the, the idea would be from the ZBA to essentially go from, you know, zero, right, the front property line to the front edge. As a special permit, and not have basically a tiered approach that's being looked, which is essentially what, uh. You see on the screen, is that of interest to the ZBA?
You totally just lost me, what you just said, Rich, say again, please.
Oh, Jesus, I'm sorry, apologies, I didn't mean to, so essentially, I would, what Chris suggested was. Allow people to seek a special permit to put accessory building in from. The front property line to the front plane of the house. Through the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, this has nothing to do with the, the front property line, does that include the fifty foot setback or not?
It does, yep, so.
The entire distance from the, we'll call it the road, okay? Or the, the front property line to the.
Plane of the house.
Right, okay?
The front.
They could put, so whatever they wanna put there, they have to get a special permit.
From the ZBA.
Yes. And that would be, in my recommendation, swimming pools as well, to be consist, uniform.
So, I, I guess I'm still wrestling with, if you got three hundred feet of property. And what I'm now understanding that the recommendation would be anything between fifty feet and three hundred feet, you'd need a special permit.
Yeah.
That's not, though, what you just said, you just said anything from zero feet to three hundred feet, you need a special permit.
Anything from zero feet would, to three hundred feet would need a special permit, currently, Don, it's.
Right, so, so what we're doing is we're eliminating the fifty foot setback.
Period, there is no fifty foot setback right now, right now, you cannot build an accessory building in your front yard. We're clarifying that to say, you can build an accessory building in your front yard, but you have to come to the ZBA first, that's really what we're saying. And get a special permit, plain and simple.
Okay, I guess I'm comfortable with half of what you said, but I don't understand why we would be abandoning. The fifty foot setback.
So there is, there is no fifty foot setback right now, the building department has interpreted. The fifty foot setback and used that in their rulings, similar to what, the easiest one is seventy five Cleveland Street. Where that he built his garage beyond the setback. So the building department gave him a permit, our bylaw says that's illegal. So there is no fifty foot setback today, there, the current.
Okay, I guess then, then this is, would be my recommendation, hearing this now for the last twenty minutes, is, is I would agree with everything that Rich said. From the fifty foot setback to the house. Is I would agree with everything that Rich said from the fifty foot setback to the house line, okay? I would say that the from within the fifty foot setback should require a variance and not a special per- permit. And that way, we can still accommodate some of these small lots that are very unique. Because again, because of soil topography, et cetera, and so forth, we can say, yes, if someone had a seventy foot. And they wanted to put something in at thirty five feet from the road or the lot line. We could say yes because of those unique situations. But I I don't understand why we would suddenly say, uh, that you could build, uh, you know, with a special permit, uh, five feet from the road. Um, that doesn't make any sense. I think the fifty foot setback that we currently have. Is, in fact, our zoning law, and I don't think anything should be changed. I don't see how we can change that fifty foot setback for anything.
There is, Joe, uh, Don, there is no fifty foot setback with regard to accessory buildings. The current bylaw says you cannot put an accessory building in your front yard, period. From the street to your house, nothing currently.
Then I would propose that we amend that to say that no accessory building will be allowed. Fifty foot for, uh, in the fifty foot setback, but an accessory building may be allowed by special permit. From the fifty foot setback to your house line or lot line, whatever.
Okay, so you wanna negate the smaller lots in town?
No, not at all. They can, they can do a variance, okay?
Yeah, but a variance, again, a variance. A variance has to be particular to a certain property.
Yes, to topography.
Nope, listen, hear me out. Has to be particular to a certain property. If you take all the properties on River Road. They all look the same. They all have the same side setbacks almost. If you take the same properties on Popolatic. On Mira Lake, most of them all have the same setbacks. They all have the same situation. And since a variance has to be particular to a certain property that is not consistent with the region. Or the community. It would basically prevent us from giving any variances to these smaller lots. And that's why a variance does not make sense in this case, whereas a special permit. Gives us a little more latitude to view these on a one by one basis.
Yeah, and and Don, if, let's just say. You said, okay, well, yeah, we'll do these as variances. It really. It would really kind of compel us to look at the bylaw anyway, cuz if you're getting these frequent variances and you're considering granting them, then. Think we really need to look at fundamentally that this is not a good approach, that we should look for a secondary option. Which really what we're.
All right, well, my my take certainly is to not to tie the hands of people who, uh, are are buying smaller property lots in town and trying to, uh. Um, you know, uh. Do things that they need to do to to make these good family homes. That's not my intent. I guess I'm just. Trying to i- i- internalize, uh, somebody who has a, uh, uh, who has a house sixty feet from the road. And they wanna put in a, what's the biggest we can put in without, uh, a accessory building? What is it, uh, ten by twenty?
Without a permit, but we can, we can put any size accessory building with a permit over ten by twenty.
Yeah, you could put a twenty by sixty, it's just can't be closer to the property line and the height of the structure, accessory building. So, Don, you might be more interested in a a a different option, I'm hearing maybe, which would be. So from essentially utilizing what the building department has interpreted, which would be the fifty. Foot setback up to the front plane of the house, let's, I'll call it by right. And from the zero to fifty would be a special permit option for the other group of, um. Of situations.
Yes, that that would be, I think, more consistent, given the way that are. Well, given the way that we see what you're just talking about on King Street.
Yeah, so. What's the? I guess the sense from the other members of the. On that.
Rich, could you repeat that last option?
Sure, so. The last option would be, so from the front setback to fifty foot, we would insert setback, so we know the front yard setback is fifty feet. From that dimension, sideline to sideline to the front plane of the house, essentially by right, go comply with. The, uh, the height of the building to the side setbacks and go build it, you know, provided. Get your building permit and whatever, so. And then from. Fifty to the zero property line to the front property line would be a special permit option through the zoning board of appeals.
It sounds awfully complicated to me. Why can't we just keep it simple the way it was, uh, initially written?
Yeah, I think if it gets to fifty one feet, it's a different sentence than fifty feet.
Yeah, you just, you you're adding a level of complexity here that we really don't need.
So your, your, um. Your thought would be. Nothing from the. So no, no special permit option, and then from fifty feet back to the front plane, special permit or not, special permit?
I I'm of the opinion, anything in the front yard is special permit.
Yeah, but I mean, that's the intent of the, of, that's what the the intent or the direction they're trying to go in with the rewrite. If I understand it correctly, or Tim just, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I I I get the same, I get the same impression. This is Joe.
Okay, and some of these, some of these will be very easy. I mean, well, there's.
I, okay, I I I'm I'm fine with that. I I would love to have, but, um. You know, I I'd love to add to that something like, but in no instance shall, uh, the, um. These temporary structures be less than like twenty feet, but that we're not, I I. That's just, I I'd like to see there be some minimum, even if it's a small lot on River Road or wherever. So that people, uh, in the front yard could not put a pool five feet from the road or put a, um. Uh, a shed five feet from the road or ten feet from the road. Um, and I don't, I don't have any magic answers to whether it's twenty feet or ten feet or. But I I I think this, this should be a, uh, a bylaw within the town that says that there is a boundary. Between the road and, um, the the property that you just can't put anything on that area. And and it's certainly, I'm not married to fifty feet. Am I making sense, Joe?
Yeah, so, um. I suppose a slight variation could be just, I'm just talking out loud with you. You know, zero to ten feet is no, it remains no, but. Ten up to the front plane, ten feet back to the front plane, the special permit, or maybe it's twenty feet or fifteen or something.
Yeah, Chris, how does that sound as a compromise?
I have no problem with that.
I I I mean, I I I I will yield to anybody relative to the amount, but I'm just saying. What we were talking about earlier basically said that. And that's because of some of the limitations that these lots have, and I understand that, but it basically said. That, uh, you can apply for a special permit and be two feet from the, from the road, okay? And I think we have to have some minimum standard, whatever that might be. That still allows for the flexibility in some of these smaller home lots, but at the same time, there's gotta be some standard that says you can't put something right on the edge of the road.
Yeah, I thought that, I thought we were documenting here, you would have to do a variance if you were within the setback.
No, no, we we did away with the concept of variance.
Yeah, you move. Yeah, you moved away from that, so this would be slight revision, but would give you that no, you know, essentially no zone, you know? Zero, if it's zero to ten feet. Um, or fifteen, I mean.
Yeah, I I think the ten foot makes a lot of sense because when you look at snow removal, site distance, things like that, safety issues, cars. Traffic, some swerving around a car, and clearly, you don't wanna have your pool one foot off the road and.
Yeah.
And cars piled up into the pool, but I think ten feet is is, uh, you know, a good place to. To draw that line for now and see, and I think what Rich said earlier about if we have a lot of folks coming in seeking. Special permits or variances, it really talks to, maybe, maybe the zoning code is is not what we want, is is time for a review. That we're gonna see that a lot on on what we're seeing tonight on the. Set on the sideline setback for some of these small lots. These lots are now valuable and people wanna stay and improve them. And we're, we're, we have these bylaws that may be a little antiquated in those areas and we're struggling with it. But I do think, Don, I think your idea of ten feet, that's very palatable to me. And that beyond that, I think, special permit to the, to the house.
Could I suggest that, um, somebody get the actual, um, setback that the DPW require if. There were need for a sidewalk to be put in, so that way the town isn't having to ask the homeowner to move. A property or something built within that allowed setback.
That that is a good suggestion, cuz there is a, they do have a plan for some sort of documentation where a sidewalk would have to be off the curb. With a, uh, grass firm between the curb to the sidewalk. So you're right, that's good, good suggestion. That's the town, town right away, right?
No. Right away, then there's a five foot setback for a sidewalk.
Yeah, so it would be from the property line, not the actual pavement end, so, um. The one, so just thinking about in terms of the swimming pool, I'm not necessarily suggesting that. You open swim pools up to ten feet off, you know, um, is there? I mean, I.
Well, I think, I think to interrupt you, Rich, but I I think what started this whole thing was swimming pools were one and sheds were another. And I'm, and and so you you can't turn around and say, I think we gotta put them all together, okay?
I understand.
And maybe ten feet isn't the right number, maybe it's twenty feet, maybe it's twenty five feet, um, but. But I I I I just think there has to be a minimum that people can put stuff in their front yard, period. And 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 I'm, I I'm not gonna interpret what that minimum is, but it should be a minimum. That if people can put in their front yard. And whether it's ten feet, fifteen feet, twenty feet, twenty five feet, uh, maybe we throw that back to the planning board and say, listen, okay? Wh- what do you think should be the minimum that people can put things into their front yard? If they have a very small yard and they've gotta put. A shed someplace, or they've gotta put a very small garage, or they wanna put a swimming pool, what's the minimum that they can put it? So as you drive by the road, you can't necessarily see it, or it doesn't get in the way of things. And we ask for their input. They have a better idea of that than we do.
I think talk to the DPW, Rich, because again, right, take the five foot strip plus the four foot sidewalk, which is our minimum sidewalk. You're at nine feet right there, so I think if you talk to DPW and then talk to the planning board, we're probably somewhere between ten and some number. But I think you could probably get some feel from the DPW and the planning board as to what is a good starting point there.
I I I suspect we might land on something whereby. You at least haven't have enough space to get a vehicle out of the, you know, off the the right of way. If you have a garage closer to the street, I I'll talk to DPW, I I agree, we can.
Okay.
You got your marching orders on that?
All right, well, I'll I'll create a revision and review with the planning board and report back to you.
And 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 thank you to the rest of the board for listening to my, uh. Garble.
No, 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 it's it's important. Thank you. I appreciate your, you know, talking through this, so.
Okay. All right, at this time, uh, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Um, yeah?
Yes. I'll be right back.
Well, Don's gone, let's approve all three. Uh, I have a motion to approve the, uh, December sixteenth meeting minutes for the ZBA.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Tim?
Aye.
Aye, and Chris, we are aye. All right, uh, do everyone review the January twentieth, two thousand twenty one meeting minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Could we get a motion to approve the January twentieth, two thousand twenty one meeting minutes?
So moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Mike Leesa?
Aye.
Joseph Asiano?
Aye.
Tim Martin?
Aye.
Just we are aye. All right, does everybody review the January thirtieth, two thousand twenty one meeting minutes?
Yes.
Hey, could I have a motion to approve the January thirtieth, two thousand twenty one meeting minute?
I so moved.
We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mike Leesa?
Aye.
Joseph Asiano?
Aye.
Don Hanson?
Aye.
Aye, this leader, aye.
And Don, while you're away, we voted you chairman, you're, you've been.
Five year term.
I wish this was Scotch instead of water. Whatever it takes, right?
All right, uh, Stephanie or Rich, do you wanna just talk to us about the annual report excerpt or, uh? I think we've all received it. I had no problem with any other members, any issues, but do you wanna?
I I already said it would look good to me.
Yep, I did the same.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any other business for the board?
Are you gonna, uh, can deliberate tonight, do you think, or not, on seventy? Are you gonna deliberate on seventy four Leland tonight, or?
Um, what's the board's pleasure?
I'm tired.
You're tired?
Yeah, we are gonna get backed up, though. That's a pretty easy one. You wanna knock it out?
Mike's tired.
Yeah, but I mean, it's only, you're gonna be knocking it out in like five minutes.
All right, all right, okay, okay.
All right, I'll give you, I give you five minutes, cuz I agree with Joe. I think it's a slam dunk.
Okay.
All right, since you and, uh, since Joe and Don think it's a slam dump, why don't you two start with the finding of facts? Let's go.
Well, we have a deck that's being replaced, the exact size and shape and height, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Twelve by eleven?
One more time, what'd you say, Chris?
Twelve by eleven?
Twelve by eleven, correct.
Correct. Pre-existing, gonna just be torn down, replaced.
Right, I mean, it is non-conforming, but there's no changes in that non-conformity conformity.
None.
No more non-conforming. Right. I mean, I I would highlight that identical as before is the whole.
Correct. I think you wanna mention the decks attached to a single family.
Yep, do that, yep.
You know where the property is located, Joe, you can identify.
Yeah, I got the usual located and.
In Franklin.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll mention the 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 border with Franklin, yes.
Yep. I'll go through the criteria, what people are thinking.
Okay.
Must be in harmony with the general purpose and a ton of the bylaws, a single family, a residential area. They're going to remove the existing non-conforming deck, build a new deck in the same place, same footprint. Second criteria was the use is appropriate location, not detrimental to the neighborhood, does not to be alter the character. Of the zoning district, deck is being reconstructed in the rear of the house, and I think we had nobody present to either, uh. The question or to, uh.
Nope, nope, no, Noah Butters.
Noah Butter.
We're opposed, we're opposed.
We had adequate and appropriate facilities provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. No facilities exist there, it's it's no change in the use. The proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the zoning zoning districts and neighborhood properties. Due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sewage, refuge, materials, visual or other nuisances. The existing deck is being replaced, no issues to date. Uh, number five is obviously not applicable. Um, obviously, the proper site plans have been filed with the planning board, the proper number of copies submitted with the special permit, yes, they have. And the use is consistent with the master plan as updated, and yes, it's a single family home residential district. So I think he, uh, he met those, that criteria. But do you have anything else that you'd like to add to this?
Just when we say Butters, we just basically say there were no Butters present at this meeting or or in or submitted any opposition.
I think both, no Butters present or submitting. I think both, no butters present or submitting opposition.
Correct, that's how I, that's how I noted it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else?
Guess we make a motion to approve?
Yep, go ahead. You're gonna make it, Joe?
Yeah, I don't have, I have the wording in front of me.
Come on now.
I make a motion that we approve the uh, special permit. To demolish and reconstruct an existing uh, deck. That will not be any more non-conforming than the current deck at uh, seventy four Leland Road.
If we have a second.
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, okay, uh, this is a motion to approve special permit, Mike Kalisa?
Yes, to grant.
Jose Sebastiano?
Yes, to grant.
Don Hanson?
Yes, to grant.
Tim Martin?
Yes, to grant.
This for weeder, yes, to grant. Very good, okay. Joe, you can write that up quickly probably and get that over to Stephanie.
Right, yeah, I'm also, I'm, I have some IT issues I'm gonna try to resolve next week, I'm trying to get an appointment either next Monday or two, Wednesday with a, our IT person.
Yeah, and if there's anything I can help with, just.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's mostly because I have trouble pulling documents from the links, so it's a little bit of an issue possibly with the way I'm set up, but. Um, I'll get it done for you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work through it.
All right, thank you.
And we'll uh, and we'll work with Rich and Stephanie, see if we can get a um, a site visit pending weather on eight West Berks Road. See if we can get that uh, get a view out there.
Maybe not this weekend, but maybe in a weekend beyond, it might be.
Yeah, we'll have to see what the weather does, I think we have to, we have to take a look at some of these things that's going on there. Rich, one of the things on that, that I was, I was surprised was, is that the existing concrete pad. On that property?
Yeah.
You were, we were requiring a variance. For the existing concrete pad to have a structure put on it?
Yeah.
That, that pad is, if that pad is an existing concrete pad, and he's just building, he's just building on it. That would not require a variance. So you may want to look at that as well.
You mean with the screen porch you talked about, right?
Correct, correct, because if there's an existing pad there now. He certainly wouldn't be encroaching the plane any greater, or the setbacks any greater than already exists, so that variance may not be necessary.
Okay.
So you may look at that, okay?
Okay.
All right. If we have nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to close the zoning board of appeals meeting for February seventeenth at nine oh three PM.
So moved.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good, have a good night, thank you very much, everybody, thank you, Rich, thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Good night.
Welcome aboard, Stephanie.
Thank you again.